Good evening and welcome to the July 13th, 2015, meeting of the Florissant City Council. As we begin, I would ask that you join, stand and join the council in reciting your pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Egan.
Here.
Caputa.
Here.
Shildroff.
Here.
Hanky.
Here.
Pagano.
Schmidt.
Here.
Sayam.
Lee.
Here.
Let the record reflect that a quorum is present. Item number three, approve of the minutes. Ms. Pagano makes a motion to accept the meeting and executive meeting minutes for June 22nd, 2015. That is seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor? Aye. Mr. Hanky makes a motion to accept the work session meeting minutes for June 17th, 2015. That is seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Let the record reflect that both set of meeting minutes have been approved. Item number four, hearing from citizens. If you would like to address the council on just about any issue, you may do so at this time. I would ask that you complete a speaker's card, one of the yellow cards located on the table at the entrance of the chambers, and hand it to Mr. Hessel, who will forward it to our attention. Please be aware that this is not a question-answer session. If you wanted to have a question answered personally, see myself or one of the council people after the meeting. Paul Manganielli. Good evening, Mr. Manganielli. If you'd be so kind as to state your name and address for the record.
Sure, it's Paul Manganielli, 1600 Estes. Again, I thought if I come here late, that I wouldn't be the first one up. That's okay. Just real quick, again, we had our food truck event rescheduled twice because of rain on the 28th, and I again want to thank the city for all their help. I do want to recommend that the police officers that were there that night be, I would recommend them for a commendation for their help in getting everybody out of the, off the grounds once the monsoons hit, but I mean, it's just an example of how the city really does step up, help out with these events. They're a great community of that, and I just always feel the need to, you know, thank the city personally, on behalf of the Knights of Columbus for that. And I look forward to doing it again on August 28th.
August 28th?
August 28th, Friday.
Thank you, Paul. Robert Cloppenberg. Good evening, sir. If you'd be so kind as to state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Robert H. Cloppenberg. I live at 190 North New Florissant Road, right at St. Marie Street.
Very good. Could you please speak loudly into the mic? You can even hold it if you need to, sir.
I live at 190 North New Florissant Road.
Thank you.
I have a problem with a ditch line, which I can give this, I've got a little sketch and, you know, and, uh...
Give your hand to the city attorney.
I've lived in this house all my, you know, time here. It's been 27 years, and when I moved in, it was a three-foot ditch next to my fence, going down next to the street. Well, I found a guy breaking up his driveway, and I filled it in with that, and then I had a guy, they're running the street down, they came in and started filling that up. And then I talked to Egan May, I mean, Mayor Egan, way back, and he had leftover asphalt on the city trucks, and they brought that over, and I put that in there and helped out quite a bit. Since we've been having all these hard rains, it's starting to wash it back out again. So if I park on the edge of the street, and the guy across from me parks on the edge of the street, nobody can get through. That's why, and there ain't no parking in front of my house, ain't no parking in front of the guy next door's house on Florissant Road. It's illegal to park in front of the house, because we're right there on the corner. And there's been some bad accidents on that corner. And if you park in front of, on that, in front of my house, car's gonna get hit. That's what I have to say. And you can read it there, you can look at the sketch, and go from there.
All right. Thank you very much for your time this evening, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Next item on the agenda is communication, and there is no communication. Item number six, public hearings. Public hearing 15-07-013.
In accordance with Section 405, 310 of the Florissant Zoning Code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 Rue St. Francois on Monday, July 13th, 2015, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition: To authorize a special use permit to Taste Buds Catering Incorporated (DBA Taste Buds Catering) to allow for the operation of a catering and diner in a B3 zoning district for the property located at 1A, Malanfi Gardens Shopping Center. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling at 839763930 or TDD 8395142.
Thank you. Is the petitioner, Ms. Connie Bobo, present? Ms. Bobo, are you present or one of your representatives? Before I move to postpone the meeting, is there anyone in the audience that had come prepared to make comment on this that would like to do so? Seeing none, I'll make a motion that we postpone this public hearing to 7/27/15. This motion is seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor? Aye. Public hearing number 15-07-014.
In accordance with Section 405, 310 of the Florissant Zoning Code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 Rue St. Francois on Monday, July 13th, 2015, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition: To authorize a special use permit to U&amp;J Green Enterprises Incorporated (DBA Jays) to allow for the operation of a restaurant lounge in the B2 zoning district for the property located at 12667 New Halls Ferry Road. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 8397630 or TDD 8395142.
Is the petitioner, Ms. Felicia Cook, present? You may step forward, ma'am. Good evening and welcome. If you'd be so kind as to state your name and your address for the record, I'd be appreciative.
Hello, my name is Jackie Green. I live at 718 Quest Over Lane, St. Louis, Missouri, 63141.
Thank you. You may proceed with your, um, your vision, or Ms. Cook's vision, I should say.
Okay. Um, Ms. Cook's vision or our vision. She's imposing to do a lounge where customers can come in, and it's a laid-back atmosphere. They can come in and eat, listen to some jazz. It's all fixed seating. Hmm, that's about it.
Do you have any diagrams or, um, things you wish to show the council?
I'm sorry?
You wish, anything you want to show the council on the, on the big board there?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right. We'll field questions from the council. I will start with Mr. Schmidt. Mr. Schmidt, go ahead.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions. One, hours of operation, I have a concern. Till, refresh me, what are the hours of operation? Let's go that way, because I'm gotten, I'm, I'm reading this, and I have three different things, so...
I believe it was from 11:00 AM...
Ma'am, can you speak into the microphone?
Sorry, sorry. I believe it was 11, okay, here we go. All right, I'm like this. Okay. I believe it was from 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM.
And that's where I have the problem.
Okay.
Now, in the ordinance, I believe, which is on the agenda for this evening, I believe the ordinance has it as 1:00 AM, I believe. Let me...
The thing was that during planning the facility, it was suggested that the hours of operation be designated until 2:00 AM, so that they have an hour to clean up. But, that's not an operation, that's cleanup.
Right.
You must close to the public at 1:00 AM, so I asked Anita to change it to 1:00 AM for the hours of operation. That doesn't mean they can't stay open and clean up.
That's...
But I didn't want any confusion by suggesting that they could serve alcohol until 2:00 in the morning. That's how we got there.
That, this is where, this is where my questioning is going to, too, because like I said, I'm, I'm seeing it one place, I'm seeing something, something different.
Okay.
However, I do still have a problem with the hours of operation. That business does back up to residential area on the one side, and also a little further And even though you're gonna say, "Well, yeah, everything's inside," well, not necessarily. When people are leaving the building, they are gonna be opening and closing car doors, they will be talking on their way out, and that, I think that would be a concern with some residents right there on the side, especially on the back parking lot, as well as on your front parking lot. So I do have a problem with that. I, I can see, I mean, I would like to see your hours of operation until midnight, Sunday through Thursday, and then Friday and Saturday till the 1:00 AM.
Okay. We addressed that with the property owner, and we have gotten the property owner to approve, I believe it's gonna be a six-foot or seven-foot fence, vinyl fence that's gonna wrap around the building to control the noise.
That's my, that's gonna be my next line of questioning, so we'll skip the fence for right now.
Okay.
I understand that, but that's not a soundproof fence. You're still gonna hear car doors, you're still gonna hear voices and talking.
Okay.
That's where I have the problem. So, I would like to see the hours of operation at midnight, Sunday through Thursday, and then I'll give you the 1:00 AM Friday and Saturday. But I think midnight would be very reasonable. I'd actually like to see it all over there and that, but, um, because of the residents. I, I, I know that's what happens. People leave, they don't do it maliciously, but it's just an opening and closing of a car door. You'll hear it.
Okay.
As I said, those residents are right there, their backyards back up right to where this fence is going to be, so they will hear it, so...
Before there's, um, houses, it's a big yard, I mean, it's like a lot of land back there.
That's in the back.
That's in the back, so the fence is gonna...
That's in the back, not on the side.
You're talking about to the left, like right there on that side where the fence is gonna be?
Where your side door comes out, where the chain link fence is existing right now, those are all residents right there.
Um, going around that side, no customers, no one will go around that side. You can't, you're talking about...
They'll be parking in, they'll be parking in the back, and they'll be parking on the side, which is the backyards of those residents.
Okay. Well, we do plan on having security back there to help expedite getting the customers out of the place and into their cars and going in.
You can't negate the sound of a car door.
Okay.
You're still gonna hear it. So, that's, that's my objection to your hours of operation.
Okay.
The second thing is, and unfortunately, since you don't have a screen up, is I'd like to know where this fence is gonna start and stop, and how far it's gonna be. I mean, the plan doesn't show it specifically, and it's a little vague to me, so that's why I wanted to make sure I understand where this fence is gonna be, and so...
Um, if you're familiar with the property...
I am familiar with the property.
That you are, so the, um...
I was just by it the other day.
It's parking back there, as you know, and then probably from this, from...
Are you replacing the chain link fence as well?
No, it's not a chain fence, the city, the Floriss...
Well, you have a chain link fence now, and the way I understand it, is you're replacing, the owner is going to replace that, the property owner is going to replace that chain link fence, as well as extend that privacy fence, six-foot privacy fence, all the way to the back of the property.
Right.
And now, is it going across the back of the property as well, where you have the green buffer?
Yes, it is, and that was, um, you guys' ordinance, or whatever the new laws or ordinance is, I'm using the correct terminology.
Well, that's, again, I guess, that's what I wanted to know, is where that fence is gonna be on the back line? Is it gonna be in front of that green space, or is it gonna be towards the back of it, closer to the property line?
It's gonna be, from my understanding, and the city of Florissant is making them put it in a particular place, so if my memory serves me correctly, it's gonna be in the front. It's gonna wrap around, it's gonna come around that side, it's gonna come around that side, and it's gonna wrap, so if that's that back area, and this front area right here, so we can kinda use this, it's gonna, that tall fence, that vinyl white fence, is gonna come directly around, all the way around to the other side. So the back kinda looks like this. So that fence, according to Florissant, they had their own specs on how they want that fence put up. So according to their specs and their ordinance and how they want to design, it's gonna be in the front, wrapped completely around the, um, area. So, let's see if I can...
Well, see, that's what I'm trying to get, is I want the answer of where it's gonna be. I don't want, I guess, that's why...
The front, I'm gonna say the front.
So that's where it's gonna be, is the front?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Well, all right, that's all the questions I have for right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Ma'am, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
What is your position, your position with the firm?
Um, I'm gonna be her finance manager.
Your finance manager?
Kind of more in finance area of it, helping her do the business side of it.
Okay, and you will be taking Mr. Schmidt's, as well as everyone else's concerns, back to Ms. Cook?
Absolutely, I'm taking those.
Okay. You know, in the past, that property was a, was a bar or lounge, or, I'm not quite sure what, but it was a source of a lot of angst, and I, and I hope that you have plans, I'd like to hear about your plans for maintaining the peace in the community up there and maintaining, I know one morning I went up there and there was trash everywhere from the, from the bar, when it was old timers. Can you maybe talk to, a little bit about what the plan is to maintain the peace and security of the, uh, the neighborhood up there?
Absolutely. Um, like I stated, we do plan on having security on the outside and the inside. Because of the age bracket that we're kinda targeting towards, we're looking for that 30 and plus crowd, and like, the, I think, helping with the fixed seating, and it not being a, um, a bar, club type of atmosphere, you're gonna cut down on some of the, I think that they kinda cater to a younger crowd, and so we're just kinda, like I said, looking for that crowd that wants to come in and eat and listen to some music. Uh, we will have staff on hand to clean up, and like, we'll have a whole hour, so if the club closes at 1, we'll have to 2:00 to make sure, and we facilitate that the place is maintained and cleaned up. And I, from the last meeting, I was here with Ms. Cook, um, they are requiring, I think, a bigger dumpster with the fence around the dumpster now, to control the trash overflowing over, and you guys being able to, and the community being able to see the trash overflow. Um, and the security and the cleanup person will be responsible for maintaining the grounds, constantly. We'll have a, um, full-time maintenance person, probably several ma, I'm sure, several maintenance persons. We'll...
Very good. Do you have, um, you'll be offering sit-down meals, or will you let people bring food into the, into the business?
Absolutely not. You may not bring food inside the business. You would have to order within the business, and you will sit down and have your meal.
Your basic of restaurant, where you can purchase alcohol and listen to jazz, is that fair?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Mr. Shildroff, I believe, was next.
Thank you, Mr. President. How are you? Thanks for coming tonight.
Hi, how are you?
Great. You will have live jazz music, a band, correct?
Yes.
And no DJ, is that right?
No, we have live music.
And you're gonna make a really good effort to keep those doors closed, so the, you know, so the neighborhood doesn't get that...
Absolutely, yes. The fire marshal was here last time, and we discussed a lot of the, um, he's gonna do the specs for making sure that the walls are soundproof, that the doors, I think he's, the store will stay closed and so forth.
Okay, okay, thank you, ma'am.
And he was very pleased to come on board and work with us and make sure that this is maintained and properly.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Lee.
You know, you answered the question about live music and, and things, but you mentioned security inside and out. Are you gonna have security there all the time, inside and out, or you have one person there, or, you know, doing both inside and outside security, and are you gonna...
We will have security there all the time. We have security outside and inside.
So you'll have two full-time security people there whenever the club is open?
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Schmidt, if, if you're gonna move forward with this, I would like to put an amendment into the, that they have that, I mean, that, that might solve some of the issues if we had full-time security whenever the club's open, so, that's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Caputa.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, um, my questions were answered.
Ms. Pagano.
Um, Mr. Lee asked my questions, so thank you.
And Mr. Schmidt.
Follow-up question. Uh, could you give me the kitchen hours? How late are you gonna be serving food?
Eleven. The kitchen will close down at 11.
That's all I have, thanks.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Is seeing none, Mr. Schmidt motions to close the public hearing. That is seconded by Mr. Lee. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The public hearing will be closed. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Sure, thank you, guys.
Public hearing 15-07-015.
In accordance with Section 405, 310 of the Florissant Zoning Code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 Rue St. Francois on Monday, July 13th, 2015, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition: To authorize a special use permit to Rising Star Academy LLC (DBA Rising Star) Children's Daycare to allow for the operation of a child daycare center in a B1 zoning district for the property located at 3645 Marietta. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 8397630 or TDD 8395142.
Thank you. Is the petitioner, Jackie Smith, present? Good evening, Ms. Smith. If you'll be so kind as to approach the dials, give us your name and your address for the record.
Jackie Smith, 1352 Capel.
All right, you're gonna have to, you have a real soft voice, ma'am. If you could talk into that, I'd appreciate it.
Jackie Smith, 1352 Capel.
Thank you very much. You may proceed.
Okay, uh, well, basically, we are asking for a spe, special use permit, so we can open up the, what is that, your 36, 3645 Marietta into a childcare center. We already have like two of them open, and we're looking to expand our building. So we found the one in, out here in Florissant, and that's the one we wanna open up and turn it into a childcare. We looking at how maybe, maybe 110 and kids, we don't know for sure.
I'm sorry, how many kids you think you...
About 110.
110?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's probably not at the same, during the same times, just in general, maybe through the, you know, two shifts, 'cause we going for like, we 24 hours, so we're trying to do 24 hours in, you know, for the parents who work evening shift hours, and get off maybe 10, 11 o'clock at night, and eat them services, so we want to provide those services as well, to those parents.
So I understand that you'll be operating around the clock, is that seven days a week?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Monday, around the clock, all the time, you'll be open?
Yes.
Can you discuss a little bit, I went by the, the building today, and it, it's in pretty rough shape up there. Can you discuss some of the, um, some of the renovations or improvements you're, you plan on making to the building?
Yeah, um, basically, we had some people to go through, so what we trying to do is make the infant room a little bigger than what it is, put a wall up dividing, it's a divider, and divide up the, um, I don't have my paper with me, divide up the school kids from the three and the four-year-olds, so they won't be able to interact with them, 'cause they are bigger than them, so we're gonna put a divider wall up and separate them from the other kids. And as for the infant area, then we're gonna make an infant, we're just trying to make it a little wider than what it already is, close it off a little more than what it is, do some fresh paint around there, make sure all the electricity and stuff is in good shape, um, and the plumbing, get the plumbing looked at. Other than that, the building, we had someone to come through, the building's not that bad, it just needs some little ins and outs.
Little, little sprucing up, maybe, right?
Yeah.
All right, do you plan on doing, uh, any, any cooking on premise?
No, we will get our food catered.
Okay. Mr. Hanky?
Yeah, what were the ages of the children, the lower and upper limit of the ages?
Zero to 13. Will they stop paying for childcare at the age of 13? So go from zero to 13.
Okay, and my other question is, you're talking about 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I'm obviously of the age that childcare's not a big issue with me anymore, but, uh, is 24 hours a day common for a childcare?
Yes, I have three, I have two facilities up and active now. I have a lot of parents that work on weekends, and it's hard to get babysitters on the weekend.
So your, your current properties are 24 hours right now?
Yes, all of them, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
The capacity don't be as big as it do through the weekday, but you do have some parents that have to work weekends.
Okay.
Mr. Caputa.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, yes, ma'am, um, what will your ages be?
From, you might as well say six-week birth, from birth till 13.
13, okay. All right, and they will be separated, did you say?
Yes, they, they separated now in all of the facilities.
That's, that's good. All right, thank you.
You say you, you currently have several such operations running, where are they at, ma'am?
Uh, Moline Acres in St. Louis County near, um, Castle Point, yeah.
Are they both called Rising Star Academy?
Rising Star Learning Center, Rising Star Academy, and this, uh, and it used to be a Rising Star infant, but I changed that into a kitchen.
All right, very good, thank you. Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Is seeing none, Mr. Sayam makes a motion to close the public hearing, as seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The public hearing will be closed. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you. Uh, so where do we go from here? 'Cause I don't know, do we do another hearing, or how does it go? Oh, okay.
You can call my office if you want.
If you call Ms. Goodwin in the morning, she'll explain the rest of the process. Thank you now.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Public hearing 15-17-016.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Section 410-020 of the Florissant Code of Ordinances, a subdivision ordinance as amended, that a public hearing will be held by the City Council of the City of Florissant, St. Louis County, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 Rue St. Francois on Monday, July 13th, 2015, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition: To approve a final subdivision of the Lowe's subdivision re-subdivision plat for the property located at 14070 New Halls Ferry Road to divide one lot into two lots. Citizens and parties of interest will have an opportunity to be heard at said public hearing. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 8397630 or TDD 8395142.
Thank you. Mr. Mark Doring, are you present?
Yes, I'm present.
All right, sir, if you'd be so kind as to state your name and your address for the record, and if you're his representative, you explain...
Sure, Corey Bronenkamp, 3601 Spring Hill Business Park, Suite 201 Mobile, Alabama, 36608, and, uh, we're the developer.
Very good. You may proceed, sir.
So we are, propose, we've been here before, when we did the B5 zoning ordinance, and this is the final piece of the puzzle. There's been a little bit of a delay, but, final piece of the puzzle is the subdivision but final piece of the puzzle is the subdivision plat that we're looking to get approved. The B-five has already been approved. So we're subdividing a portion, approximately one acre of land from the Lowe's, the current Lowe's off of New Halls Ferry and Lindbergh, to construct a ten thousand square foot retail store.
And that will be a Dollar Tree? Is that what I understand it to be?
That's correct.
Do you have any displays you wish to show us?
I sure do. Is that clear enough, or is there a way to zoom?
I need to zoom it on your...
There you go.
So that shows the subdivision. It's one point zero nine four acres. That's being subdivided. And you have New Halls Ferry running on the bottom left-hand corner. And Lowe's would be page right, right behind that.
And again, how big will this building be?
Ten thousand square feet, or just there under.
Any other council questions? Mr. Jones.
Where's our dumpsters gonna be at? Are they gonna be enclosed, or what's happening there? What are they gonna face?
The dumpsters will be in the rear of the building. The building will be situated on the larger part of this lot. And they'll be enclosed per the B-five ordinance.
Okay, great.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, just as a reminder, this was... We did approve this public hearing already with the actual Dollar Store, or Dollar General Store, a few months back. That's why when this first came through, I was a little surprised. I didn't understand. That's why I got the clarification that this is just the subdivision lot of where the store, which we've already seen...
That's correct.
...is going to be. Which is basically the green space outside the Lowe's parking lot, behind and next to Auto Tire.
There's that shared drive that goes in.
That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you for the explanation, Mr. Schmidt. Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience present that would like to make a comment? Seeing none, Mr. Shildroff.
Yes, sir. Could I make a request? And I'm not sure if this is possible. I spoke to Mr. Siam about this before, but we encountered a delay with Lowe's in getting the subdivision plat approved, and they delayed us approximately four months. And so now we're up against the clock to start construction and close on this property before the weather, I guess, breaks sometime in December, which is right up against when we would complete the construction. And we can't close on this property until the subdivision plat is approved by the... By the city council and recorded by the county. And so I wanted to see if there was any way that we could combine the public hearings of the second city council meeting into tonight's meeting to save us approximately two, maybe three weeks to do construction and finish the project so we could open sooner.
That would be... Have to be a motion made by the council. Pretty rare.
Okay.
Pretty rare.
Figured I'd ask.
Right. Before, again, we'll go with, I believe, Mr. Shildroff makes a motion to close this meeting, seconded by Mr. Lee. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you, sir, good luck.
Do I have to stick around for the second portion of this?
You don't have to, but you can if you wish.
Great, thank you.
Next item on the agenda, old business. Second readings, we have none. Next item on the agenda, new business. Board appointments. Your honor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to appoint Amelia D. Hill from Ward Seven as an adult member of the Youth Advisory Commission.
That appointment... That motion is made by Ms. Pagano, seconded by Mr. Henke. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Request. Ward nine. Request for a beer and wine liquor license for NOR sixteen LLC Allen Zurgnja. DBA Gasmark twenty-eight located at thirty-one twenty-five North Highway sixty-seven. That motion is made by Mr. Siam, seconded by Ms. Pagano. Any discussion? All in favor? A roll call, please. Liquor license.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Henke? Pagano? Schmidt?
Yes.
Siam? Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the request has been approved. Bills for... Mr. Schmidt?
One oh seven to be removed from the agenda, seeing as we didn't have the public hearing.
There's a motion on the floor for Mr. Schmidt to remove bill number ninety-one oh second. I will second that bill. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the bill shall be removed. Bill's first reading, bill ninety-one oh eight, ninety-one oh eight.
Ordinance authorizing a special use permit to U. and J. Green Enterprises, DBA Jays, to allow for the operation of a restaurant lounge in a B-two zoning district for the property located at one two six six seven New Halls Ferry Road.
Bill number ninety-one oh nine.
Request to authorize a special use permit to Rising Star Academy LLC DBA Rising Star Children's Daycare to allow for the operation of a daycare center in a B-one zoning district for the property located at thirty-six forty-five Marietta.
Bill ninety-one ten.
Request to approve the final subdivision of the Lowe's subdivision re-subdivision plat for the property located at one four zero seven zero New Halls Ferry Road to divide one lot into two lots.
Mr. Schmidt.
I'll move for a second reading on that particular bill, the final subdivision lot. I really don't see any problem with it. It is just a simple subdivision. We've already seen the actual building, the B-five. So in essence, I don't really see a problem with this. We've done this in the past with subdivisions.
A second... Their motion to amend... To go for a second reading by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Lee. Any other discussion? I would just add that I concur with your thoughts on it. Clerk, please poll the council. You have to read it first. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Second reading.
Request to approve the final subdivision of the Lowe's subdivision re-subdivision plat for the property located at one four zero seven zero New Halls Ferry Road to divide one lot into two lots.
Mr. Schmidt, make a motion for a third reading, as seconded by Mr. Lee. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Siam? Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Request to approve a final subdivision of the Lowe's subdivision re-subdivision plat for the property located at one four zero seven zero New Halls Ferry Road to divide one lot into two lots.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Siam? Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bill ninety-one ten passes and becomes ordinance eighty-one fifty-one, eight one five one. Bill ninety-one eleven.
Ordinance appropriating the sum of forty-three thousand dollars from the General Revenue Fund of the City of Florissant to budget account number zero one five four zero five five zero 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 for the purpose of covering costs for the workers' compensation and property and cyber liability insurance.
Bill ninety-one twelve.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Florissant to enter into a program agreement for federal funding for project number STP five five nine five six fourteen, known as the North Lafayette Street Reconstruction Project.
Bill ninety-one thirteen.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Florissant to enter into a program agreement for the federal funding for project number STP five five nine five six fifteen, known as the Pedestrian and Single Replacement Project on Derhakey Road at Robinwood Elementary School.
Next item on the agenda, council announcements. Mr. Jones.
Okay, first, I'd like to start off with, can we get some canned goods down to team? Like I always say, and please water and... Watch out for your animals, you guys. Make sure they got some water out in the yard if you're leaving them out. I also would like to bring up about the soliciting that's going on in the neighborhoods. A lot of people don't know, especially sitting at home watching TV right now, that they have to have a Florissant badge to be on our streets soliciting. We cannot control churches, we can't control politicians, but we can control some of these solicitors by those badges. If you see them on your streets and they don't have the badges, we need to get them out of there. Even if we need to reach out to the police department and let them know what's going on. There's some bad guys out there, and there's also some good ones. But if they don't have the badges, they're not good at all. Good, bad, or evil, they gotta have the badge. Another thing I'd like to bring up is the fireworks situation. It's really getting out of hand. I think everybody's grown up enough to know that a little common courtesy goes a long way in this city. So there's a lot of people that might get off on doing the firecrackers and the fireworks, but I think we need to take a ride and go to the proper place to do them, you guys. I mean, it got out... Really out of hand. I had about thirty-five calls just on the fireworks over the Fourth of July weekend. I think that was really getting out of hand. Also, I'd like to bring up about locking your car doors. There are kids out here in these neighborhoods right now that's going through cars. I know everybody doesn't think about it at the time until something gets stolen out of their cars, but we need to pay a little bit more attention and make sure them doors are locked up. Also, we have a neighborhood watch meetings coming up. You know, we need some help, you guys. We can't do everything. We got the police department, one of the best. Our council guys are on board with this. We need some participation from you guys out in these streets. We need you guys to walk out of your house once in a while and ask who that is in front of your house. We need some help. There's a lot of us that work very hard out on these streets to make things right, but we cannot do everything. So we are asking for your help. I did go up to Handyman Hardware, get some no soliciting signs. Anybody in my ward or anybody in the city catches me in the next couple of days, I got about fifty of them. Please come by or call me up. I'll come deliver it to you. But we have to make a stand. A lot of these troubles that we have on our streets are not from our neighborhood, you guys. These are outsiders coming into our streets. And nobody's gonna stop it except some of you guys stepping out of your house once in a while and asking some questions. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones and Mr. Caputa.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I would like to thank Ms. Jean No Camper for helping me out with the flowers in Ward Four during my absence when I was on vacation. Thank you, Jean. And also, I would like to say, please check on your elderly's. If you got some neighbors that are elderly, please check on them during this heat. It's a bad time of year with this heat. Our body's not accustomed to it, so check on our elderly's and our pets. Thank you.
Mr. Shildroff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank Mark and Peggy Schmidt, Jackie and Joe Pagano, Tim and Kathy Lee, Mr. Caputa, Mr. Jones, and Mr. Siam for helping with our picnic on June twenty-eighth. We got about an hour into it, and then the rain came, but we had a good time. And we are gonna do it again next year. And all the leftover food went to the police department, so I know those guys really enjoyed it. And I just want to say that while we were waiting out the rain in the back part of the... I guess it's the restroom at Dunagan Park. It was... Sounds kinda goofy, but it's something I'll never forget. It was really kinda funny. I mean, it was, you know... It was... It was some bonding, and it was some talking, and it was really good. It was... And I'm serious, it was really good. And I'm just glad I got to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shildroff. You have to tap that, Mr. Henke, go ahead.
Not gonna try. Did no bonding. I'm just gonna piggyback with what Councilman Jones spoke of on... There's gonna be a neighborhood watch, special neighborhood watch meeting this Wednesday. They're looking for more active participation in the neighborhood watch program, and it's an excellent, excellent program. I know you've heard it from us before. If you see something out of place in your neighborhood, you know what's in your neighborhood. You see a car that doesn't belong there, don't be afraid to call the police. If you're more interested in wanting to get involved in the neighborhood watch program, contact the police department or your councilman, and we'll direct you in the right direction. But like I said, piggyback on what Timmy had to say. The bottom line is, folks, it's your neighborhoods. You know what belongs there and what doesn't belong there. Don't be afraid to call the police if you see something that you know is not right. That's how stuff gets taken care of. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Henke. I would just add that I want to thank Ms. Pagano for filling in while I was out of town last time, sitting and holding the chair down. I appreciate the work that she did. Thank you, ma'am. Your honor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Glad Mr. Jones mentioned the fireworks issue. The chief and I had a serious discussion about that since the Fourth of July. And according to our police department, we've experiencing a noticeable increase in the amount and the size of the pyrotechnics that individuals are using this past Fourth and for several days before and several days after. And we had a lot of complaints about peace disturbance. Now, be mindful that over two hundred people go to the emergency room on or near the Fourth of July every year. And last year, nine people died from, you know, different fireworks-related accidents. Recently, two National Football League players lost their fingers in two different fireworks accidents on Fourth of July. So it could happen to anybody. These guys think that they're bulletproof, I guess, but this wet summer prevented an increase in the potential of fireworks induced fires, but we might not be as fortunate in the future if this trend continues. The sale, possession, and use of fireworks are prohibited by law in section two one five point oh two oh of our city code, which was enacted by the city council several decades ago. This administration intends to place a renewed priority on enforcement of this ordinance in an effort to prevent death, injury, fires, and disturbances of the peace. The City of Florissant provides a safe, professional fireworks display each Independence Day. This year's display, after North Wind's patriotic concert at the Egan Center grounds, was fantastic. And we invite our citizens and our guests to join us next Independence Day for a safe fireworks display at the Egan Center. Mosquitoes is another issue that everybody's dealing with. And our public works director, Lou Gerles, is putting out an information thing. It's gonna be on our website. But we have limitations. Obviously, the wet weather is making it more challenging, and there's times when we can't spray because if it's raining, we can't spray. The mosquito fogger stuff that we use is extremely expensive. We do not want it to go to waste. So if we can't fog if it's raining, we can't fog if it's... If the wind's over ten miles an hour, and we are prevented from fogging if it's over ninety-five, we're not allowed to. And then there's just a lot of things that you can do for yourself. You know, look around, look for puddles of water. Any... Look in your gutters, make sure your gutters are draining. That's a common place where mosquitoes breed. Just look for any standing water in your yard. Use mosquito repellent with DEET or protective clothing. Happy to report that the Sunset Trail is open after being closed due to the flooding, so that's open. And we have summer concerts at Ferdinand Park this Saturday, Ralph Butler Band.